Call the Newport City Council meeting to order from Monday, October 15th, 2018, 6:30 PM. The City Council Room. All members of the council are present with the exception of Ms. Rowan, who was absent this evening. Others present, who's Jim Johnson, our clerk treasurer, and Laura Dogan, our city manager. We need to make a couple of changes to the agenda. We need to move number six and seven, the executive sessions. They will be after number nine, old business. So I'll have to move those. We'll need a motion on that effect. And we also need a motion on executive session, which was currently seven, to discuss lease negotiation. We need to also add possible vote on that one. So with that, those are the changes that we need to make to the agenda. Now you could entertain a motion.
I saw a motion.
A motion has been made. Is there a second? Second discussion on agenda changes. And hearing that, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. The next item is to approve the minutes of October 1st, 2018. I trust the council members had a chance to review the minutes?
Mm-hmm. Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented.
A motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Made and seconded to approve the minutes. Any discussion on the minutes and on the motion? Then hearing that, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. The next item is comments by members of the public. We have a few people who signed up. If that is, if you had signed up to speak regarding item number five, which was a presentation by Mr. Benoit of Memphamagla Conservation and Charlie Pronto, I'm going to allow public comment during that time.
Can we make sure that the normal two minutes that we are allowed now will be allowed then?
I will do it at my discretion. Excuse me, let me finish. I will gauge how many people are speaking. I will gauge the length of time. I will time it on my watch. But it is up to me, and I will gauge it. Generally, I've been lenient and let people go for two minutes or more. And so it is up to me as the chair of the board to set the time. And I will gauge based upon the number of people who wish to speak.
And also, there are some people here who are not familiar with our process, and they may not know that they need to sign up ahead. Are you going to allow them to speak, or do you want them to sign up now as well?
There's no need to sign up if, there's no need to sign up if it's regarding an agenda item. Public comments where people sign up are for those who wish to make comments on items that are not on the agenda or are not being voted on. Okay. And with that, anybody have any comments that they wish to make who signed up that are not related to the presentation? Okay, then we'll move on. The next item is a presentation by Green Lantern Solar. Sam Carsten? Carsten, I mean, Sam Carsten.
I'm sorry for showing my back to you. We're happy to stand if that's better. Sure, let's do that. Sam Carsten, Victor Meve, we both work for Green Lantern Solar. We are a solar development company that's based in Waterbury, Vermont. We are an exclusively Vermont-based company. We work throughout the state of Vermont, from Broward to Newport. We have about 50 solar projects in operation around the state. We are what's called a commercial-scale net metering company, meaning we don't do any project larger than four acres. Most of our projects are one acre. In power terms, that's between a 150-kilowatt array and a 500-kilowatt array. We don't do residential rooftops. We don't do gigantic 20-megawatt projects. We are main customers, because we're a net metering solar company, are cities and schools. And I have just an updated list. If you would kindly just pass that around, that shows all of our projects that we have developed and are operating in Vermont, and it shows you who our customers are. Again, the bulk of those customers are towns and public schools, some private schools as well. We also work with ski areas quite extensively because they have large electricity expenditures, and they're interested in offsetting those expenditures through solar net metering. Would it be useful for everyone to just explain briefly how the mechanism of solar net metering works to enable towns to save money?
You may want to have it just a brief.
Just, just very quickly. So the legislation that's passed by Vermont State Legislature, approved by the governor with respect to solar net metering, allows solar arrays that are up to about four acres in size, so up to a 500-kilowatt array, to do what's called net metering. That means we, we build a solar array, we plug it into the grid. The utility, in this case here, would be Vermont Electric Co-op. Further south would be Green Mountain Power. The utility doesn't pay any money for that electricity. The electricity just goes wherever it's needed in the ISO New England grid. For every kilowatt hour of electricity that goes into the grid, the utility, again Vermont Electric Co-op, issues a credit, a net metering credit. And that credit, think of that as like a DIX debit card, all right? It allows you, it allows you to reduce whatever you are going to spend at DIX through the value of that card. If you have a $100 debit card at DIX, you can go to DIX without a $100 debit card and spend up to $100, use your debit card, and you didn't pay any money, all right? Similarly, a net metering credit. If we sell that credit to a city or a town, the town can then use that credit to pay down their electricity bill. So you'll say, well, why would a town pay $100 for credits to reduce their bill by $100? Wouldn't do it, all right? We sell those credits that are generated by the solar array at a discount. So that's like, if you have a $100 DIX debit card, but you only paid $88 for it, you'd save $12. And you'd say, I'd do that all day long. I'll give you $88, you give me a $100 debit card, and I go into DIX. That's basically the offer that we're making to the city of Newport, is we're offering to sell these net metering credits at a discount to the city of Newport. Newport then deducts from their electricity bill the value of those credits. We have right now a 500-kilowatt array in Leamington, Vermont, that's fully permitted by the Public Utility Commission, executed land leases, the, all permits are in place. We're ready to go to construction.
It's in a preferred site, which is a sand pit, and it's aesthetically out of sight, out of mind. Most of our projects for Green Lantern, you will never see. They're completely out of sight. So it's met with town approval, and it's been fully permitted. So the project is, is ready to be built.
So the city of Newport has electricity expenditures that are in the realm of $200,000. The city of Newport could do net metering, purchasing these net metering credits from the solar array, and save around $18,000 a year for the next 20 years at no cost, at no risk, at no liability. It's basically a purchase contract whereby the city of Newport would say, we agree to buy these credits at this guaranteed percentage discount, and we'll apply those credits to our VEC bill, and we'll save money on our electricity expenditures. Again, it doesn't, there's no upfront cost or investment. The city doesn't own the array, so there's no insurance, there's no liability. All it is, is buying that DIX debit card that's worth $100 for $88, and doing it at a larger scale so that it can generate around $18,000 a year in savings. That depends on how many credits the city of Newport, if they want to go forward, wants to buy. That takes a little bit more of a deeper dive into your electricity expenditures by meter to see exactly how much net metering we could do.
And just to be clear, you have no physical attachment to the actual solar array. This is just a contract for the power credits that are produced.
The power credits. Now, my question is, so we buy, oh, I don't know, 100? I'll just do a small scale. We buy 100 watts a month. That's tiny, but I'll just do an example.
Right.
Of net metering credits. What if you produce a lot less? Does our bill go down that we have to pay you? Or is this a fixed net metering whether you produce it or not?
Right. So the way that the billing works, you, the city would be billed monthly based on the previous month's actual production and allocation of credits to the city's meters. So the city would never be paying for credits it hadn't already received.
Okay.
The, just to give you a sense of scale, a 500-kilowatt array would offset somewhere around $140,000 of electricity expenditures, just as a, as an order of magnitude.
And we also bill for actuals, and we can set up the fiscal year to run with your fiscal year. We do that with a lot of towns, and so it's important for you guys to, to be on the actual cycle that you guys run in.
Now, our, we enter into this, this would be based upon the Leamington site? Because I noticed you had one as proposed for Derby.
For Derby, right. So I was here 18 months ago, and we had a similar discussion. The Derby project is still in permitting. It does not have its certificate of public good yet from the Public Utility Commission. And so I've been keeping Laura sort of informed as to why we don't have that permit yet. But now that we have this other project that is permitted, we said, well, we ought to at least let you know that the opportunity is there for you to move forward on this Leamington 500-kilowatt array that is fully permitted and ready to go, and not wait for Derby. We still expect that the Derby project will be permitted, but it hasn't come through yet. So it's a, it's a timing question. That's why.
Which also, I was at a presentation where they talked about the Sheafield effect, the Sheffield Heights, you know, that whole thing.
This is not in that territory whatsoever. It's already been approved.
It's been approved, but we still have the issue of too much power where they have to shut things down.
Leave on on this, right?
No, but I want, let me finish, please.
Yeah, sorry.
The issue that, I just want to make sure because for anybody who might happen to be going by Sheffield Heights and you see the turbines turned off, it's because we're producing too much power and the power grid can't handle it. Basically, that's the issue. And it's all these projects feeding into it that's causing that issue. And the presentation is, it's going to take a, it affects all of Vermont. And I just wanted to have that on the table because I didn't know if, this is probably, this is small enough so you're not regulated by ASL New England.
Correct.
Because you're below that threshold.
Correct.
But it's still, it adds to that effect. That issue that Vermont Electric Co-op is having issues with, other power companies in northern Vermont, I know are all having issues with that effect. Because the whole power grid, actually, in reality, the whole power grid needs to be upgraded because there are days that it cannot handle all the renewables being produced.
Correct. So the Derby project is caught up in this Sheffield Highgate Export Interface, which is a really weird term. The Leamington project is outside of the Sheffield Highgate Export Interface.
Okay.
And that's in part why it's fully permitted, and there are no problems with that. So that Leamington three-phase line is, doesn't connect into the Sheffield Highgate area. So it doesn't have the problems linking with the wind turbine production and the challenges of getting so much wind power out through outdated or two small transmission lines to the south. So that's, that's really the, that's why we're here tonight, is because the Leamington project is outside of the Sheffield Highgate Export Interface, doesn't cause any issues for any of the wind projects or anything else, and yet is in VEC territory, and that's why it's available. So just to, just to reiterate, we can't tell you exactly how much the city could save until we can do a deeper dive into your electricity expenditures by meter to see exactly what's the optimum allocation of net metering credits to, to your bills. So it can be as much as about $18,500 a year if the city takes all of that 500-kilowatt array. It might be less if the city's electricity expenditures and the metering are such that we can't allocate all of it to the city. So we don't know that until we can actually really dive into the expenditures. Laura and I, we've had this discussion.
Because, because we already have another net metering credit, and the law, we can only have so much.
Well, we have one meter that is already in net metering arrangement, so that one is not part of this. So what we need to do is do the assessment that you're speaking up to determine which would be the most advantageous. We don't know that yet. So if the council is interested in pursuing this, I would request a motion to allow me to do some, some more work with Green Lantern as well as our city attorney so we can really iron out the, the terms of any duration and terms of the contract, and then come back.
So should I give you some questions?
So basically, this would be a one-acre array that you would set up for this area?
Three and a half, basically. The actual footprint's three and a half, but with shading for it. And it's in a reclaimed sand pit. So we're reclaiming the sand pit.
That would be my next question, exactly where we would be looking.
Yeah, Leamington off of, you know, Colbrook, New Hampshire? Right across the bridge, there's a big sand pit on the, if you're going north towards Kanan on the left. So it's, it's right there, and it's part of it. It's going to be an operating pit on one side, and then for their phase reclamation, we're reclaiming the three and a half, four acres for, for, and it's already been, everything's done. Like, it's ready to be built. It's a good reuse of land, too, because otherwise it would just be sitting there, you know, possibly not being reclaimed because it allows, you know, the solar allows a lot of reclamation in the state of Vermont, which is the purpose of putting it in the sites to further the land use and get some taxes for that Leamington. It helps out along even this whole project. This is a very small town.
Other questions from the council?
Laura, this agreement here, obviously you'd be sending this off to Laura to look at because there are quite a few discrepancies that I understand this. Okay. Other than that, no other questions. Thank you.
Mr. Ross, anything? Then you would need, before I open it up to the floor, we would need, on this one, we would need a motion if you still want to have the manager proceed to work on this. And then I'm going to open it up to the floor after.
Then I would make that motion, and then we have the city manager go ahead, pass this by the city lawyers, and also check with the other agreement that we have. Let's see if it will be peaceful for the city department.
Motion debated, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Made and seconded. And now I'll open it for discussion.
The credits are denominated in dollars or double watt hours? Dollars. A net metering credit is just a financial unit, just like a DIX debit card is a financial unit. So if, for every kilowatt hour of electricity, which is a physical unit, the utility issues a net metering credit, which has a financial value of 19 and a half cents.
So this is 19 and a half? That's a good question, because I just thought, this is 19 and a half cents, because residential's 14 and a half.
Right, so actually, this is, okay, so this would be?
16 change. I can get you the real number.
But it's higher than the residential, but less than the.
Well, residential rate for VEC is pretty high. I'm on VEC.
No, no, I'm thinking about the net metering credit that you get.
Right. It should be about 17 and a half cents.
It's the median of, yeah, I can get you the number.
So the way that the value of the net metering credit is determined is it's, it's the weighted average for Vermont, which is about 15 and a half cents, plus, preferred site, it being a preferred site, which you get another penny, plus we're turning over the renewable energy certificates, which is sort of the, it's kind of a confusing thing, but they're legally the environmental attributes of being clean renewable energy. Those get turned over, the RECs get turned over to VEC, and VEC then pays another two cents. So, and then we discount that value as per the net metering agreement that you have in front of you.
Okay. All right.
I have three questions. One is, you mentioned 20 years. Are we committed to a 20-year contract? Two, you say you're building this thing in Leamington. When would our credit start? And three, can you explain to me who's paying the extra money for the credit? Because your, your company is not giving away energy for free. You're clearly making a profit.
Sure, so I can address some of those, and then you can talk about the construction side of things. Net metering here in Vermont sort of derives, if we walk it back historically, to the Obama 2009 stimulus package, which put into place investment tax credits for renewable energy. There's a 30% investment tax credit for renewable energy. There's also accelerated depreciation for investments in renewable energy. So we're sort of leveraging those federal investment tax credits and accelerated depreciation opportunities. That's what allows us to offer to a city or a school which can't take advantage of those tax and depreciation opportunities because towns and schools aren't paying taxes. That's what allows us to offer that as a discount. So we can still monetize those credits by selling them at a discount, and we can make money doing that. But at the same time, the city can make money doing it. So we're sort of splitting, in a sense, those investment tax credits and accelerated depreciation opportunities. That's the simplest way I can explain. Your, on the construction timeline.
You make it 20 years.
20 years, yes. The reason why it's a 20-year contract is because a solar array of this type has a big upfront investment. It's on the order of 1.7 million, probably. And it takes a long time to pay that back, selling the credits to a city of Newport or to the Johnson Elementary School or whatever. It takes about 15 years to pay back that big upfront investment. So the bank, when we go to the bank and say, we need to borrow 1.7 million dollars so we can build this array, the bank wants to see, well, what's your cash flow? How are you going to pay us back? Where's your net metering agreement that's 20 years long so the bank knows they're going to get repaid? If we went to the bank with a 10-year net metering agreement, they would say, no, no money.
My Vermont joke is it's not a cash cow, it's a steady milker. As far as the construction, can you repeat your questions? Just so you answer.
I wanted to know when we could start this if Leamington's not even, is just a sand pit right now. We can't start it until.
It's commissioned.
You're fully operable.
Yep, exactly.
What should you expect to be?
In a perfect world, in the spring it will be built. Takes about 10 to 15 weeks to build, so it really depends on how, how much snow and what the climate allows for.
We would hope for April or May commission.
Anything else? Then we have a motion on the floor. Any other discussion?
You have one more.
Go ahead.
You were talking about 30% credit that you get from the federal government, basically. What happens if that's reduced or taken away?
Right. So that is a, that investment tax credit applies to the year that the array is commissioned. So if this solar array gets commissioned in 2019, that 30% investment tax credit is in place.
For 20 years?
Well, it's, it, once it's commissioned, it's locked in. So the owner of the array basically gets that tax credit. It doesn't, so it's, it, there is no sort of even need to grandfather anything because it's just taken in, in the year that it's commissioned. It's immediate. Fun fact, this was the Obama stimulus package. It was due to expire with the end of Obama's administration, at the end of 2016. My initial contract ended at the end of 2016. The last act of John Boehner and Mitch McConnell was to extend this investment tax credit until 2021 because there had been so many jobs and so much economic activity that was linked to this investment tax credit. So it was the Republican administration, actually, Congress, that extended the Obama stimulus package and the investment tax credits through 2021. Yep.
Go ahead.
I'm just sitting here. Does this involve carbon credits also?
Not carbon credits. It involves these renewable energy certificates or RECs. And in a sense, that's kind of like your carbon credit. It's, it's the environmental attribute, the fact that this is nice, clean energy. Vermont Electric Co-op has statutory requirements of how much of their electricity has to come from renewable sources. So this helps VEC vis a vis the state to say, we're complying with the state's renewable energy targets. And are those sellable?
The electric company, we can't say what they'll do with them, but most likely they're going towards a tier, tier one.
They used to be sold out of state until about two years ago. And then the state of Vermont said it's wrong for solar developers to be selling their renewable energy certificates to a coal.
Yeah, and we're actually happy they did because it, it makes it truly renewable, you know, project. And we're, we're from here, you know, we're staying here, we've got a lot of projects that we're taking care of for the long haul, so.
Right. But you're, you're right to ask the question. It used to be that they were sold out of state, but starting two years ago, that stopped.
Okay. Anything else? Then we do have a motion, and it was seconded. Then all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is presentation by Robert Benoit of Memphamagla Conservation
Member of council, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for accepting the Memphamagla Conservation at your board meeting tonight. Who are we? Who are we? We have been here for fifty-one years. We have six hundred fifty family on the Canadian side of the lake who are members. For the past fifty-one years, we have been working to protect that lake and its improvement with the residents, municipality, the province of Quebec, and the government of Canada. They all know that we are here tonight. We have closed a garbage site in Memphimagod many years ago on the shore of the lake. We have helped change the law to force the reforestation of the shoreline of the lake. We discussed with municipality to improve the zoning, to improve the zoning regulation. In other words, as volunteer. Everything that could harm the health of the lake is more concerned. You realize that a wild population of a hundred and seventy-five thousand people is drinking cocaine washing with the water of Lake Memphimagod. Cities such as Sherbrooke, Memphimagod, and a large number of other cities such as DeMonge, Hermannichla, Mansonville, Lennoxville, Saint Élie, Deauville, are using that water from the Lake Memphimagod. All the residents on the Canadian side, and its mayor, and council are greatly concerned by the fact that your municipality accepts to dump into the lake through your treatment plant to be trucked toxic lichate every day of the year. And I will give you later on the memoir of the MRC wrote by Sherbrooke, Memphimagod, and the MRC about the fact that they are really worried about it. Not matter what some people say in this municipality, the municipality of Sherbrooke, Memphimagod are really worried the water they use is coming from this lake. And I'll give you their memoir after. Tonight, we have the council of Newport as good neighbors, who is careful with the dollar of their citizen not to throw your juice from your trash in Lake Memphimagod. You could answer me that the quality of the water we drink for the moment is good quality, and you will be right. But the time will show us that the biological accumulation will finally kill the quality of our water. And also, it is also your water in Newport. Seventy-one percent of the water in Lake Memphimagod from the United States from four river, Barton, Black, Clyde, and John River. Lake water stay in the lake for more than two years and build up chemical. There is a chemical accumulation that you like it or not, the lake is not a river. You have been elected by your population, and we take for granted that you are wise people. The wise person recognize that the precautionary principle must be applied. The great problem with the environmental world are problems who are slowly created, like a stair. You can see them building up and building up. But not only they take a hell of a long time to build, but they take generations to solve. The plastic in the ocean, we never going to see the end of it. The warming out of the world, I don't think I will be there if they ever succeed. And the acid rain, all the tree got really affected by it. And we don't know how to solve this problem. So, for generation that will follow us, let be sure that we done our own more conscientiously. And we ask you, Mr. Mayor, and member of this council of Newport, please stop dumping the toxic garbage juice from the coventry in that beautiful lake. And, you know, be part of the solution, not the problem. That's what we asking you tonight. That's what the citizens of the MRC, Memphimagod, and the city of Sherbrooke are asking you. Be part of the solution, not of the problem. And I'd like to give you the history of MCI and the memoir of the MRC. And I understand you will be meeting one mayor, and perhaps also somebody from the state of Sherbrooke in the next few days. So, I think I represent, MCI represent here tonight, a large, large, large approbation from the people in our area. If you permit, I will ask the Director General of MCI, who's a biologist, to give you a few more, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening. As you see, MCI is concerned about the presence of the landfill close to the lake, about its expansion, and about the treatment of lichate in Newport. The ways buried in the landfill contains thousands of contaminants. A high concentration of PFAS and excessively toxic pollutant was found near the site, and a lower concentration near a line part of the site. Preventing contaminants from migrating from the site to Lake Memphimagod is a major concern for us. These PFAS test results show enough data to warrant a full investigation before an expansion occurs. But now the government of Vermont have accepted the expansion with condition to address concern regarding PFAS in the lichate, which means the government still have questions about PFAS contamination. The concern about the discharging treated lichate in Lake Memphimagod is not new. A report conducted in 2004 concluded that it will be risky and intrudent to discharge lichate into Lake Memphimagod due to the risk of unknown and unregulated contaminants. The report used to restrict all lichate discharge into the lake's watershed. Despite this recommendation, since 2009, a part of the lichate from the landfill is treated at the Newport wastewater treatment facility, a municipal facility. This is not appropriate to treat lichate. There is big concerns about this treatment. And because the lichate analysis in Newport does not include many chemicals, we don't know the impact of the lichate on Lake Memphimagod. We do not understand how an important test, like the wet test, usually done in Vermont and Quebec treatment plants, was not done at the Newport plant outlet since 2008, when lichate is treated at the plant since 2009. The wet test is a test that consists to put animal organisms like trout in the outlet of the treatment plant to see the effect of the wastewater on these animals. The fate of lichate contaminants throughout the treatment process and the cumulative effects in Lake Memphimagod are unknown. Because the municipal treatment plant is not appropriate to treat lichate, and because we don't know the effect of the lichate on Lake Memphimagod, our deepest wish is to stop right now the treatment of the lichate in the Newport treatment plant. Thank you to hear us.
Let me stay up here for this. Okay, so thank you. So, I'm not going to get into the same discussion that we got into the last time. I've already had that discussion with you folks. What I want to talk to you about is what probably has happened since our last. And of course, one of the obvious ones is that the permit or certification for the solid waste portion of the landfill has been approved by the Agency of Natural Resources. They called me up and told me they were sorry, but that's, a lot of the issues that we have are not part of the solid waste portion of the permit. If you saw the Channel Three News article last night, or the night before, you had Chuck Schwer, who is the head of the Agency of Natural Resources Solid Waste Division, said that contaminants were not a consideration in giving this permit. So, they issued this permit because CASLA meets all the guidelines that the Agency of Natural Resources has for that small section. They look at a, they look at a really small segment of it. I told you before that CASLA does what they are required to do, and they do it well. What our problem has been right along is what the Agency of Natural Resources and the state requires it to do. We have a few other issues other than that, but that's basically the deal. So, I'm going to get into what we know and what we don't know, but since October tenth, there were two headlines in the Newport paper. One of them was public safety people toured the Washington Electric Plant, the methane treatment plant was there, and some people from CASLA's were asked questions. So, and I just took it out, this out of the Newport paper. It says CASLA said, "They have an interest to protect the environment, and they will be doing a phase to put the online nettle landfill into a new lander." What they didn't say is that is not scheduled for twenty years. So, that's the landfill that's leaking. There, I believe it's phase five or six. I'm not sure what phase it is. But hasn't been started, is not a requirement of the permit that Solid Waste gave them. And the last discussion that we had said it would probably be twenty years from now. So, and CASLA said that they are trying to prevent pollution from migrating further into the wetland. When they were here at your meeting, they told you it wasn't leaking. But apparently it is migrating. And when you look up the word migrate, it moves from one area to the other. So I assume that's leaking.
Are you referring to nettle there?
Yes.
You're still talking about nettle?
Yeah. So, I, you know, I think, I mean, they can answer for themselves. They're here. But the, if you call the Agency of Natural Resources, and you call Department Environmental Conservation, and you say, "Is lichate leaking into the groundwater near CASLA?" And they will say, "Yes." What they don't know is if it's leaking beyond their property. Partly because they haven't tested for it. I asked, for the PFOA section of it, I asked Jeff Bordeaux, said, "Have you tested? You have the test results tested in the Black River around there?" And he says, "No, we haven't tested for PFOAs around there." I said, "Then how do you know that it's not getting into the apartment?" He did not have an answer for me. They said something about, they did some testing for salt, or saline, or something that gets down in there. And because that wasn't present, they assumed the others aren't present. But it was just, it's just a speculation, so... The other part that was in that, in that article was CASLA was saying that if the permit to expand is not approved, the waste would have to be trucked out of state, which will impact air pollution and heavy truck trash. Which I kind of laughed at, because what they didn't say is that's exactly what's happening now, except it's all coming to COVID. It's coming from all across the state. Which is not anything that you guys have a right to. I'm just, what I'm trying to put in place here is, when you ask a question, a lot of times you get a dance. And it's not, it's not actually a mistruth. It's just sometimes it eliminates things that they uncomfortably... State officials have also said in that same article that it is not reasonable to truck trash from all over Vermont and New England to coventry. That was an article. State officials said, "We need another landfill in Vermont." What they didn't say was that currently, there is no such landfill being planned, according to the ANR, because the Agency of Natural Resources has not done their job. This is the only option. Part of the reason that permit was issued is because they don't have any other options. Solid waste is, they are in charge of it. There has to be a place to dump the trash. They don't have any other options. They don't have any other plans. They haven't studied any other options. They haven't studied any other plans. The only other certified place in the state of Vermont for a landfill is in Chittenden County. And Chittenden County Solid Waste District decided not to do it. And the reason? Because they didn't think they could get enough trash to make it profitable. And I asked them, I said, "Seriously?" I mean, and they said, "Well, CASLA has contracts with all of our haulers, and we weren't sure that we'd be able to get it." I thought that was a little just and generous. I think they're pretty happy sending it to coventry. That's what I had to do. So... In that same newspaper, there was an EPA article about the nineteen million dollars that the state of Vermont getting from the federal government for clean water. And in that, they said, "They need to build greener wastewater treatment plants and deal with the arsenic, lead, and other chemicals that affect people's homes." So there's an admission right there that it's a problem. Current groundwater, this is in that article. Currently, the groundwater samples below CASLA's landfill is tested high, and in exceedance of standards at two specific sections of the landfill. Not just one, two. So, here's what we know. PFAS and groundwater sampling from the Department of Environmental Conservation Report, nine, ten. I sent all of you guys, all of these test results and all of these reports. Probably ten thousand pages was the stuff, but I tried to pull out the stuff that was... In that, it said, "The online portion of the landfill is migrating." I'll try not to use leak, but to me, that's the same. And the PFAS level there was a hundred and sixteen parts per trillion. Twenty is the standard guideline. Of the hundred and sixteen parts, fifty-seven parts per trillion of that is PFOA, which is the stuff that Bennetton is dealing with now. All of their wells are being closed. So, you know, and I'll just, I'll just go back here. And how do I know that? Because they've all admitted. We have a report, I sent you the report, it shows where the amounts are. What else do we know? One of the line landfills, the groundwater down gradient, which means next to, below it, whatever, showed up at six point seven parts per trillion in the groundwater. So there's stuff coming from that, too. They can't definitely say that it's coming from there, but seeing that the lichate that's in there is at ten thousand parts per trillion, and one of the other tests that we have, I guess it would be safe to say that's probably where it's coming from. They haven't done a test to decide that yet, so... But, they do know that it's in the groundwater. My problem with part of that is they're not going to do anything about the netto for twenty years. That's coming out. If you watch the Channel Three, I had them span from my house, from the landfill to the water. You're an eighth of a mile, maybe less. It's right on top of the Black River. The Black River comes in right by where your well is for the city of Newport. So if it's in the groundwater there, just a matter of time. They're going to wait twenty years. It's just a matter of time before it's going to be in your water. Nobody knows. Everything that I'm going to show, read from you from now on, and I'm going to try to keep it relatively short. Everybody I've talked to, this is an emerging contaminant, and they just don't know. And that's what bugs me. They don't know, yeah, they gave them the permit anyways. The effluent treated from Newport was tested. The effluent from your plant, that's the water coming out of it after it's been treated, was tested by two different methods. And one of them, the PFOA parts per trillion, directly in the lichate was eighteen hundred and fifty parts per trillion.
What's the acceptable standard, Charlie?
Twenty. Well, twenty is in the drinking water, so that, and I'll try to explain that. In a second test, it was twenty-two hundred and four.
But you'll explain the whole range and what that means.
What they do, what they do is they take that twenty parts per is from what they test downstream of that. So that stuff that you pour into the river, goes into the river, downstream for that, they take a sample of it. So down gradient of that, it's twenty parts per trillion is allowed. And I don't think it's tested higher than that. I'm not sure they have tested it. I haven't seen any results. But the theory there is dilution is the solution to pollution. Problem is, PFAS... Problem is, PFAS are non-soluble, they don't dissolve, so they stay in there and they just keep accumulating. That's why these people have a problem, because it doesn't go away, it just keeps building up and building up. They don't know the effects of it. So, the Agency of Natural Resources, I've contacted several of them, and the Department of Environmental Conservation will tell you that wastewater treatment plants are not able to treat PFAS. The leachate, but it flat out come out of there, not airborne. There was a groundwater analysis done by Mr. Hindal, who I think was here tonight, that had said that arsenic, iron, lead, and magnesium levels statistically achieved groundwater standards in many of the upgrading, downgrading wells in Coventry. For instance, arsenic, 49 parts per billion, standard is 10. Lead, 57 parts per billion, standard is 15. Protonium, 150 parts per billion, standard is 100. Nickel, 230 parts per billion, standard is 100. So it's high everywhere. This was in his report. So the, the report says the exceedances are, in the same report, likely the result of migration of leachate from the online later, which they're not going to fix with one year. And they are also in the leachate that you're treating. So, a couple of things, in the permit, now, they send out the permit, I don't know if you guys looked at the thing, it was like 15 different categories and 5,000 pages, but at the end, they do, basically, it's a conclusion, everything, and they put a lot of information in there. These are just some of the excerpts from it, and this is from Vermont Agency of Natural Resources, they just printed it off the site. Coventry landfill pre-treatment discharge, which is another permit that they're going to go for. Certification, utilizing PFAS concentrations measured at the Newport wastewater treatment facility, the Department of Environmental Conservation has calculated likely receiving water concentrations of PFAS downstream of the Newport wastewater treatment plant within the Clyde River, where they have been detected. The Department of, the DEC has concluded additional evaluation of landfill operations and leachate management is appropriate to minimize potential impact on local retail water. So they're, they're saying they need more, more evaluation, because they don't know anything about it. You'll find that all, all the way through their things. Coventry will manage landfill operations to promote reduction in leachate. Reasoning, the primary goal of landfill infrastructure is to minimize the leachate production, and that may serve to reduce the total amount of PFAS that need to be managed within the leachate. May also, so. It's an ongoing study, they don't know, they don't know for sure. They're, they're going to ask, which again, I have a problem with, Casella's will conduct a study of PFAS and the waste being disposed of at the landfill and the treatment options for leachate. Basically, it's saying the permittee, which would be Casella's, to develop a sampling plan which will identify waste streams that have potential high levels of PFAS and evaluate the range of PFAS concentration in these waters. Furthermore, goes on to say, this evaluation will guide the DEC's work in evaluating potential waste sources for which treatment to or at disposal may be appropriate. So again, they're saying, we're going to let them test it, check it out, because we don't know. So again, that's another we don't know. And this is all from that permit. The DEC will conduct a more detailed investigation in the concentration of PFAS in Vermont's leachate, influent and effluent from wastewater treatment plants and surface water. Further evaluation is needed to better understand the fate and transport of PFAS from landfill leachate as it is processed through wastewater treatment. It makes you feel fairly confident, doesn't it? Further evaluation is needed to better understand it. They don't know, they don't know. The DEC will evaluate existing information and treatment containing waste prior to and at the point of landfill disposal. Reasoning, there may be options for managing PFAS containing waste which can reduce the release of PFAS to the landfill leachate and therefore potential for environmental release. So what they're saying there is, when it's in the leachate, it has a potential for environmental release, not just a potential, it's happening, you do it. PFAS is an emerging contaminant and is a growing concern for all states and the environmental protection. There are a number of states are actively in the process of requesting landfill leachate, wastewater treatment sampling and investigation, and finding out what the appropriate steps are to address this issue. So again, they don't know. Everywhere along here, they, they don't know the answer. PFAS has been described as emerging contaminants, compounds that are, occur wildly, widely in the environment, but for which only minimal data is available to assess their risk. PFAS have been of greater regulatory concern in Vermont since 2016 discovery of the PFAS problem in Bennington. Evaluation of health and ecological impacts are taken on a chemical-by-chemical approach, with significant resources being expended to develop necessary toxicology information needed to adopt regulatory standards. But they don't have, because they don't know, they're still going to test. Beyond human health, the evaluation of potential ecological impacts of PFAS on natural communities has been even more limited, so they know even less about the accumulation of it once it's, once it's deposited. PFAS and water treatment facilities, this is in the Agency of Natural Resources release, conventional wastewater treatment facilities processes do not efficiently remove PFAS. Wastewater treatment processes can lead to physical and chemical partitioning of various PFA compounds into either the treated liquid effluent or into the solid sludges, which then may serve as sources of PFAS to enter the environment. This is in their permit, so they're, they're giving a permit, explaining that, they don't even know what's talking about. So, there are a lot of places that can take leachate. One of the questions in here was, which wastewater treatment plants receive leachate? Has there ever been a problem? To the second portion of that, there is no answer in this, in this. They didn't answer whether there's ever been a problem. The facilities that are currently available are Montpelier, Essex Junction, the city of Barry, Burlington, the city of Newport, Concord, New Hampshire, and Plattsburgh, New York. What I want is for all of it to go to all of the, to take Newport, too.
Could you repeat that, Charlie? What you want?
Excuse me, please address me.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
So what we want is for them to take it all, not for Newport to take none of it. Furthermore, and I'm almost done, Senator Bray, Chris Bray, who is the chairman of the Senate Natural Resources Committee for the state of Vermont, has also been involved in this, he's very alarmed, because it's not just affecting Newport, it's affecting the Dog River, the Winuski, the Youngian, all dumps into Champlain, stuff from Plattsburgh is going into Champlain, Lake Champlain is also receiving all of this stuff, and he's, he's pretty upset. He sent all kinds of questions to the Department of Environmental Conservation. One of them, I have a basic question, are wastewater treatment plants designed to remove PFOAs? Answer, water treatment facilities are not specifically designed to remove this. That's from the Department of Environmental Conservation. Currently wastewater treatment facilities have no obligation to monitor and treat PFAS compounds. The state does, this, this is the answer from the state, the state does not have a standard for PFAS compounds in surface water, which is what happens when it comes in. Goes on and on, I have all the test results. His comment, sent me an email after the decision was made, this is his comment. This was the most irresponsible action I've seen while in government, and prior to the election, while politicians are especially sensitive to public issues, I plan to make this an issue. If re-elected, I am moving this issue to the top of my list, because government needs to adopt a precautionary approach to the issue of citizens being exposed to toxins. Anything else leaves all of us as guinea pigs, who must first become sick in sufficient numbers to draw a governmental response, just as we saw in Bennington with the PFOA poisoning that took place. I am committed to this work, and I thank you for all your hard work. So. As a, as, this permit has required Casella to do a couple of things, so we managed to get a couple of issues on the table. I mean, we're not happy with the, with the later permit. Two of the things are, they're going to have, Casella must do a semi-annual, annual, twice a year, monitoring of PFAS in the groundwater, underdrains, and leachate. Casella must do it, not, the state of Vermont's not going to do it, Casella must do it. Number two, Casella must, again, conduct investigative evaluation to onsite, to offsite leachate treatment options, and submit to the Agency of Natural Resources by the end of October 2017. So, they gave them the permit, everything that I just read to you came right from them, saying they don't know what the hell's in there. PFOAs, we all know is dangerous. Casella's not doing anything wrong, because they have, they've got a permit to do it. You're not doing anything wrong, because your wastewater treatment plant's permitted to do it. When I asked the state of Vermont what the rush was, when you, when you tell me that you have no idea what the effect, the long-range effect are of these chemicals, other than Bennington's idea, where we all know it was really bad, and you don't know how to treat it, you don't know how to dispose of it, you don't know how to deal with it, why the hell did you give them a permit, until you know the answer? And he said contamination was not a consideration in this permit. That goes to the Act 250 board, the wastewater disposal, there's a couple others. So there's all these departments within the state, and one just passed a buck off the deal. So, here's what we want. Dump, Memphis Meg, conservation, we want you to stop taking leachate immediately from the Newport wastewater treatment plant. We would like to see a motion and a vote on it, we want to know what your stance is on that, until they can prove to you that it's perfectly safe, all the tests have been done, and everything is fine. That's what we want. Number two, my group and a couple of the other groups that we are aligned with for the Act 250 permit, would love to have the city of Newport take a stance that they do not approve this expansion until, once again, there is proof that it's not ever been a harm to this lake and our people. There are other reasons, other than that, for you guys not to do it. The odor, the air quality, the track, your water supply, there's a lot of reasons that you could get on board with this. And I'm just saying, I would like a motion from you, a stance, saying, we oppose this until these tests have been done, and they know what to do, and they have a proper way to treat it. So that's my preparation, and thank you very much.
Questions from council members before I open it up to the floor, because I said I would like people, anybody, anything, what do you think of right now?
Are they mandated to treat the leachates? Casella? I know they folded out at the landfill, like if they're told, you don't, we don't want it to be treated at our wastewater plant, do they still have to treat the leachates, or will they just say, well, we're not going to treat them?
Well, no, they have to treat it, I mean, that's, I think that's part of their, part of their permitting is that the leachate is, is, it's getting there, you can't just stay there. I mean, it's got to be pulled out everywhere.
Yeah, it would have to go somewhere else, but...
But that's why they have, that's why they have all those other places.
Because you're only allowed to treat so much, don't you get, how many gallons are we allowed to treat right now?
15,000 gallons.
15,000.
But you've asked, you've asked for more, right? I saw a letter in May, saying that you would, you would love to have more.
We have not objected to a request to have more.
Right.
And Casella is here, so Kevin's question might need better responded to by now.
Right. Yeah, let's, yeah, I have a question for...
I mean, I assume they have to have a place to get rid of it.
Right, so then, yeah, Casella's here to answer that, and I'd like to have Casella address the 20-year timeframe for the netto landfill that, that keeps coming up, if that is truly going to be 20 years before anything happens, or, because that's the online landfill, that's the old landfill. And so, someone from, Casella wished you...
Sure. My name's Joe Gay, I'm an engineer with Casella. Kevin, to answer your question, we are required by this permit that we're talking about to have a permitted disposal location for our leachate. So we have multiple wastewater treatment plants that we permitted, in the event that, you know, one goes through an upgrade, we can go to another. For instance, Montpelier just went through an upgrade, and we took the leachate to other wastewater treatment plants while they were going through that upgrade. So, there's some flexibility in the permit, and it allows us to go to other options. So yes, it is a permit requirement, we do have to take it. As far as a 20-year Phase 5 project, so I think I'm getting a pretty ringing endorsement for Phase 5, at least from what I'm hearing, so, so with Phase 6, that's permitted for 22 to 25 years. We're on a four-year permitting track for Phase 6, which is the permitting we're currently going through. So we started three years ago permitting Phase 6. So we think it's going to take four years to permit Phase 5 when that, when that timeframe comes. And if we're at a capacity in 22 years, we would start permitting in 18 years. So, close, 20 years rounded up, plenty, about 18 years from now. We would have capacity through, you know, 18 years from now, and we begin to look at the permitting for Phase 5 in about 18 years.
Any council, the other council members before I let people through the audience out of this time?
Can I make a comment on the treatment of leachate? If everybody decided not to take their leachate, that would be a really big problem, and that may be, I mean, that may happen down the road, once it starts, if it begins to start. From what I've read, I probably read, you know, 10 or 20,000 pages worth of all kinds of stuff related to this. From what I've read, there are pre-treatment options that they could build onsite, they're pretty expensive. There are carbon pre-treatment facilities that actually can do a fairly good job with PFOAs until the carbon doesn't work anymore, and then they have to redo it. So there, there are other options where they, if, if all of that happened, they may be forced, they'd have to build one on their site, you know. They do that in other areas.
The carbon, it sounds like a infiltration.
Well, it works, works for a while, till it doesn't work, and then...
I know, I think one of my concerns is the PFAS, that aspect being so new, and after reading what happened in Bennington, and that whole area, that, I mean, I know when that first hit the news, I asked the city manager if we'd done testing of our water coming from the well, just to make sure, because we didn't know with everything, and...
That test, that is, and I don't want to interrupt you, but that is a particular test. So your test that goes out for lead, arsenic, and all that, you have to do a special test.
Right. I, that's my concern with, with us taking more, you know, or expanding, is that unknown chemical that is so new, and it's been a concern of mine from, basically, since it affected the Bennington water.
I just had, had Mr. Mayor, if your well ever get contaminated...
I just had, had Mr. Mayor, if your well ever get contaminated, you may have to pump your water like other cities do in Quebec, from the lake. And if, at the same time, if you have polluted the lake, you have no fallback position. The well will be polluted, and the bay will be polluted. So that's why, we're not just asking for Canadian, we're asking for American. Be very careful before you discharge anything on the lake.
This would go back to probably when you, Charlie, or Dan, when this came up originally, or even Mr. Gayle might know. Is there a contract that says that the city of Newport has to take leachate to treat it? Is that ever...
We do have a permit, and the permit allows 15,000 gallons a day.
Right.
And if we have reason to believe we'd like that to suspend, then of course Casella wouldn't cooperate with that.
So there's no contract that says you must take it? It's only a permit that says you could take this now?
We are permitted for that.
The, when I was, I can go back to answer part of your question. I was on, Dan was after me, so. I was mayor when the Solid Waste Division was originally talking, and it wasn't not Casella, I think it was Waste USA, of putting the baggies, is what I called them, into landfill over there. One of my questions at the time was, and I guess they've changed their opinion on this, but I said, what's the life expectancy of these? And they said 20 years. So what are you gonna do in 20 years? And he said, well, we'll have it all figured out later, so we don't have to worry. I opposed it. I was probably the lone person out there arguing about it, because everybody in the solid waste district wanted a place to put their garbage, and they were gonna close all the landfills. So they scared the hell out of everybody, saying that your open landfill's not gonna work anymore, you're gonna have to do this. And the cheapest way to do it is for everybody to get together and go over and do it. So that's what I did. I was proposing, promoting incineration recycling back then. My wife and I have been recycling for 22 years. You just feel it's, it's just, you know, State of Vermont's really slow catching on. But, so, and there was no contract, there was no talk about leach, uh, leachate for the both of it. Nobody knew what the hell it was. Then later on, I don't know.
Well, my, my role, I was on the council at the time, but at the same time, I was working for Johnson Engineering. And I was negotiating with Charlie Netto, and we were developing a plan for Waste USA. And at the same time, statewide, all districts are supposed to be planning for a landfill for their district. So, if we had a landfill in every district, we'd never have what we have today. Today is a, to me is a monstrosity. You know, it's just too big. And again, it goes back to the state not doing their job. So later on, I think initially, you know, they talked that the initial leachate could be back, put back on top, filtrate back down through, and eventually the leachate would have to go somewhere. So the people from Waste USA came and asked the council if we could take leachate. Well, at the time, we were doing injection. We used to have a machine, we used to do the cornfield down on Scotts in several places. Now my concern was always, what happens if we take the leachate and there's a hotspot at our facility? That means that we've gotta de-water and, and landfill it, you know, landfill that product. So at the time, I didn't wanna take the leachate. And I probably, I was on the, on the edge, except the gentleman that came to explain everything got mad at us and said, well, we can take it other places for the same price. Which was a bad thing to say, because if you can take it someplace else for the same price, take it there. And I've always had a concern about hotspots in our facility back then. And I even had concerns about a hotspot when we had to build an arsenic facility. So I've never really trusted the landfill. And it's not just Waste USA, at the same time I was working on Palisades. And Palisades was having, they were having an odor problem, they were having a dust problem, because they got their cover from onsite. So, for me, if you've got a double line, that means one's gonna fail sooner or later, which means probably the second one's gonna fail sooner or later.
The other, the other part of that is, when we were here the last time, they were talking about welding, you know, you don't have to worry about if it leaks, because we welded, and we did that in Bethlehem, New Hampshire, and I don't know if you remember that conversation. Three days later, I get a thing from a concerned citizen telling me that they're being sued for violation of the Clean Water Act in Bethlehem, New Hampshire, and that they have agreed to close the landfill. Assume they're gonna bring it here, but, so. So they do leak.
Can we ask if that's accurate?
I have a...
That's not accurate, not even close to being accurate.
I have...
We are being sued by Conservation Law Foundation and Toxic Action Center for what would be Phase 5 here. An unlined landfill was removed at the site. An unlined landfill was placed in a lined landfill because, okay, this was before Casella moved the site, because there was a groundwater seep on an embankment to a river. And there was leachate from the landfill, draining out of the embankment, down a drainage channel, and into the Amundsen River. No question, environmental nightmare. The owners at the time, the state of New Hampshire, said, you need to remediate that. So the owners said, well, we think the best thing to do is to take the waste from the unlined landfill, contaminated groundwater, contaminated soil, the same thing that Phase 5 is, and move it into a lined landfill, remove the source, clean up the environment, and over time, that seep will clean up. And that's exactly what happened. In 2010, the contamination was gone, except surface water excedences for iron and magnesium. All the volatile organic compounds and all the, the things in the typical leachate were gone. Okay? The state of New Hampshire came to, at this time, now we own the landfill, the state of New Hampshire came to us and said, there's one more chapter to be written, and that is an aesthetic remediation. So at this seep, there was orange staining, where it came out of the embankment, going down the drainage channel to the river. We want you to clean that up, restore it to what it once was, and then the remediation is considered complete, 100%. We did that in 2010. Great story for the environment, environment's cleaned up. Toxic Action Center and Conservation Law Foundation is suing us today, started in March, actually, this year, claiming that we created the drainage channel. That's the lawsuit. It has nothing to do with aligner systems, at all. So that is incorrect.
And I think, just to clarify, he clarified the comment about welding it to fix it. They didn't weld it to fix it, they welded it to put two, two zones together. This is, is the way he explained it. So there's...
I don't believe a success story is what he's talking about. I don't consider that a success. Because it was an issue first. We were trying to eliminate the issue first.
Okay, I wanna open it up to, to Anne, Anne had her hand up. Anne had her hand, then we'll go to Beth after.
What about the list?
What?
The list?
Oh, yeah. Anne's on the top of the list. No, don't worry, I had forgotten the list either. If anybody raises their hand, I'm gonna let speak for this, to the seat board.
Hi, I'm Anne Sherrill, and I'm a resident of Newport. And I also want the council to do the two-pronged approach, and I'd just add a few things with respect to it. The first prong is for us to stop taking leachate and to stop admitting what comes out of the leachate into the lake. I know that is gonna cost you, across the city, $180,000 that you are now getting from the dump, but it is well worth it for us taxpayers to pay $180,000 upfront than to have a contaminated lake out there where your property values go down enormously, where no one wants to live here, and you don't have a four-season recreation situation, because you have a lake that's dead. Number two. You know, PFOAs are a dangerous thing, a thing that we have to worry about now. How many other things in the past, like Teflon, which we thought was a great thing? And the PFOA company that was using PFOAs in Bennington, which I'm sure they thought at that time was a great thing, and which closed 12 years ago? And then they find out, they're surprised that it's moved, it moved all the way from where the company was, the PFOAs, by groundwater and through, I assume, underground lakes and underground streams, much further than they ever expected it to move. And now they've gotta repipe a, a large portion of Bennington. I'm sure it did wonders for their property values, if you wanna be practical about it. So let's stop it now. There are things coming down the line that are in the garbage that's coming there that we don't even know about yet, because we've been experimenting with all the things that we thought were good that turn out to be dangerous to our health. So stop putting leachate through our waste management plant, to begin with. You know, our well is less than a mile, our two wells are less than a mile away from the dump. How long is it gonna take with the way underground streams move, different ways, to, to reach our well? And then we've got a contaminated well. And then what's our property values worth then? The other things I'd like to point out is, we enable, when we take leachate, we enable them to continue doing things, Casella, and the state. Because after all, we're the only dump left right now. They'll continue to dump on the Northeast Kingdom as long as they possibly can, until we push back. What's our pushback? Stop taking leachate. You wanna, you wanna see how long Burlington and Montpelier are gonna wanna take leachate and contaminate their rivers? Or lakes? Not long, not long. And yeah, you may reach a point where nobody wants leachate, and then Casella's gonna have to think, or some other facility, or the state is gonna have to think of other ways to dispose of waste. But if we can take the leachate, there's no impetus for them to start thinking of new ways to do things. The second thing I want to talk about is the second aspect of what Charlie mentioned, which is, what should you do about curtailing Casella? Well, one is, an Act 250 hearing is coming up, and maybe because we were so distracted with the hole and all of that stuff, we, we weren't watching what they were doing, and we weren't watching while they closed all the other facilities around the state so that we're the only dump. But now, even if it's too late for you even to become a party, and I think you should still try to be a party to the Act 250, by asking belatedly to be a party, no matter what, you can be a friend, you can go in and ask to be a friend of the committee that's making the Act 250 decision. And you can explain to them why they should not be allowed to expand. You allow them to expand, again, there's no impetus for the state or Casella to do anything else but expand. It's great, they got another 20 years. So nobody has to think about, well, what else are we gonna do with all of this waste? So how long do we wanna be the dumping ground for the state of Vermont, and New Jersey, Virginia, Pennsylvania, New York? You got the picture?
I can let other people...
And write letters, write letters to our governor, and write letters to our senators and representatives, and tell them, we don't wanna be the dumping ground for all of the garbage in Vermont and elsewhere.
Okay, next on this, well, I'll go to Beth, and then, because, and I'll go down to Sam.
Beth Barnes, Newport, but I've recently moved back from Williston, where I was living with my boyfriend. That is important to the story. I was kayaking with him this summer on the Black River, and he reassured me that the landfill did not leak. It was all a bunch of hype, and we were all worried about nothing up here. What's interesting about that story is that he is the managing partner of Brevell &amp; Shea, which is the law firm in Burlington that represents Casella, although Bob does not represent it directly. His fellow partner, Tim Eustace, spends a lot of time there. Is he right? Does it not, does it not leak? Is it just a bunch of hype, a bunch of, of country bumpkins in the NEK, which is the way he made me feel? So anyway, Bob Rushford, managing partner for Brevell &amp; Shea, I don't know if that was true, but he told me that the landfill does not leak. Also, I find it really interesting about Williston, and that they did not want, or that they said that there was not enough trash to dump down there. Well, I'm here to tell you that at least four of the managing partners at Brevell &amp; Shea live in Williston, as does the, the office manager, Bob Rushford, who is the managing partner, Tim Eustace, they live in Williston. Of course, they don't want it in their backyard when they can ship it off to the NEK. Another interesting fact is that each attorney at Brevell &amp; Shea needs to do pro bono work. The managing partner, my former boyfriend, Bob Rushford, represents, yes, just for the record again, represents the South Hero Watershed Association. And he helps them clean up the water in Lake Champlain. While we up here are dealing with this catastrophe, he's down there doing pro bono work to help them clean up Lake Champlain. None of it makes sense to me. Sorry. I just had to share those little snippets. None of it makes sense. He's cleaning up their water while the rest of us are drowning in poison up here.
Pam, that's... It's been covered? Sue Watson?
Susan Watson, from, well, from Spruce Street in Newport. I've been reading a lot about the potential of PFAS, PFAS and PFOA and leachate getting into the groundwater in Newport, which to me just feeds right into our drinking water. And I've been really curious and concerned why the Newport City Administrative and Council Group seems to be unconcerned about the Newport drinking water. Well, it's understandable. Vermont Heritage is providing them with water, so they don't have to drink the city water.
I don't know. I'm not gonna comment on that one. I just don't even deserve a comment. We are very concerned about our drinking water. We test the water, we, we had to spend 3 million, I don't know how many million, on a treatment plant because, to treat the water. And so, we're very concerned about our well water, and we test it. Just because we have a water cooler from Mont, Mont Heritage doesn't mean we don't trust our own water. That is a complete utter nonsense. That's my editorial comment on that one. No, we're gonna, let me get, let me let everyone else speak. No, I have Jay Walsh next.
Hi, I'm Jay Walsh. I'm a new resident to Newport, two years. Have a wife here and two small children that go to school here, who I hope are gonna be able to enjoy this lake throughout their lifetime and return from college to live here and raise their own children. I fear that that is not gonna be possible if we continue to dump this PFOA and contaminants from the leachate through the wastewater treatment facility, which is woefully unprepared to treat that effectively. I've been doing a lot of the research for Charlie and, and the dump group, and, you know, it, it's surprising that the state doesn't seem to know what to do with this, or that it will contaminate, you know, the health of our residents, because I've reviewed over, in the last three weeks, I've reviewed over 75 health... I've reviewed over 75 health studies from around the world by the EPA, the Department of Health, the World Health Organization, studies from Japan, China, Europe, Korea, Australia. They're all dealing with these chemicals. They are pervasive throughout our entire world. PFOAs are not just, or any one of those classifications, PFOS, PFOA, it's not one chemical. It's a series of thousands of chemicals, okay? This is toxic soup that is coming into this land, this water treatment facility. They're a group of synthetic compounds containing thousands of chemicals persistent in the environment and have shown the ability to bioaccumulate. That means that they do not dissipate in our wildlife or in our organs. They accumulate. Also in the plant soils and the sediment in the lake. So it is going to be there forever. The compounds are biologically and chemically stable in the environment, meaning that they tend to resist any degradation processes at all. They will not go away. They are not being diluted by the hundreds of millions of gallons in this lake. They are still concentrated. I've looked at these studies on the health effects of water in the sediment, surrounding soils, plants, organisms, vertebrates, fish, waterfowl, and humans. And none of them describes safe for humans in any level. The standards for the release to the environment are only assumptions. They do not know. These are what they term acceptable exposure risks, okay? Some of these health risks are pregnancy-induced hypertension and preeclampsia for women, liver damage, increased cholesterol and low-density cholesterol levels, increased thyroid disease, decreased antibody response to vaccines, increased risk of asthma, increased risk and decreased fertility and testosterone, decreases in birth weight, excuse me, brain development effects. And the half-life of this in humans for PFOAs is eight years. That's not, that's if you're not reintroduced into your system again, okay? And this can be absorbed through the skin or it can be ingested. For PFOS, it's five and a half years. Once in the lake, these toxins are going to be there for good. There is no cleanup solution. We know this from the Hudson River and the Houston River in the Berkshires in New York from GE. There's hundreds of millions of pounds of chemicals, PFCs, that were disposed of by GE, which also poisoned the city that I grew up in. The city I grew up in was Fitchburg, Massachusetts. The river that runs through that was a different color every single day from the disposal of tanneries and paper manufacturing. And then GE decided to come in because it was an open sewer. Let's dump in it. It took the heroic efforts of one woman to clean that up. It took her 30 years to do it. It's now one of the most pristine rivers in the country. I just want to see my kids grow up here. I love it here. Only haven't been here two years. We have had a practice here for four years. So we've been coming back and forth here. I hope that you take action. Stop taking the leachate. It is the most direct route for these chemicals to get into this lake. We are going to be faced with the leaching of it from the landfill eventually, if it isn't already. But that's a slower process than us taking it straight to the lake. Thank you for your time.
With the exception of the guys from Casella that I talked to two, three weeks ago, I've not talked to one individual. Trust me, I've got a million phone calls and probably seven million emails. That is in favor. Not one, nobody. So what I'm asking again, and the first, the leachate part is easy. You can control it. The rest of it, you really can't control. What you can do, the reason I asked you to take a stance on the expansion is because although you can't get Act 250 status, I believe we will have it. And if we don't have it, because Casella's lawyers are trying to stop us from having it. So, you know. And we have other agencies that will fight if we can't get it, that are party status. And a letter from you, or a statement from you, saying that until they can prove that everything is safe and there's no possible contamination and no problems, that you oppose it. Not asking you to oppose it for no reason. The neighbors in Irisburg will love you for it. The neighbors in Coventry, no, probably not Coventry. Although, I haven't talked with anybody from Coventry that's in favor of it. So, but all of the roads entering in here, and we will have shortly a study of how many trucks are coming on what roads every day, and it's astronomical. And our taxes are paying for that. All of these things together at Act 250 can get us to stop it. They're closing the one in Bethlehem, the Hanfield. They can damn well close this one too. Find another place.
You hit one of my concerns, that I was actually shocked to find out that the state had no planning. And that's why they have zero planning. That even came from representatives from the state.
Casella is their plan.
Well, that's what I'm getting at. They had no plan for after 20 years. The state of Vermont had actually no planning. They planned for nothing after 20 or 22 years, which actually, that surprised me. But then again, it didn't surprise me. And I know the proposed landfill in, another reason why the landfill in Williston never got opened, there was fought for years. And then all of a sudden, they built these nice homes near it. You know, the developer didn't tell the folks there was a landfill potentially. And they built all these nice homes around it. So of course the people didn't want a landfill there. That I do know also. My biggest thing again comes back to the PFOAs or PFAs, how you say it. It's so new, the issue. That's been my concern ever since it came out in the news in Bennington. You know, because too often in the world of environment or health, they wait until, they wait 20 years until they see people passing away or, you know, getting cancer down the road. Then they do studies, well, why is there a cancer, why is there a high level of cancer in this area versus other areas? And that, then they do studies to figure out why. And then they determine it was, well, the air or the water or the air, whatever. And so that's my biggest thing, is that aspect, being so new and the state not even being prepared for the testing. I mean, if that plant could treat it and we knew 100% that it was taking out all the heavy meadows and the PFAs and all that, I'd be more comfortable. But I know I expressed that concern to a couple people with the state, saying, we don't know because you're not really testing.
How do we test?
Well, that's the issue. If we can't test for it, how do we know what we're putting in the water? See, that's my concern. We could, and I've told you that. You know, I've expressed that to you. And I already, I already actually told the manager too. Money is not everything to me. Granted, $185,000 divided by all our water customers, that's what the rates will go up.
It's going to end up being about, I'm going to guess, four cents a bill.
Four cents?
Four cents a bill.
Four cent, oh, I don't mean, four cents per?
Increase, increase, if you do the math.
Oh, per gallon, four cents per gallon?
No, on each person's tax bill, you're going to have to make up that.
This is water, this is not taxes.
No, this is utilities. I'm talking utilities.
Yeah, but utilities isn't taxes. Utilities is water and sewer.
Right.
So.
Right. So everybody gets a bill right now and their bill is going to increase. If you do the math, their bill should be expected to increase four or five cents. I'm not sure if that's a quarter or a year. So please.
No, four or five cents? Well, no, 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 but you're saying four or five cents? Are you saying per gallon? See, it's different. We're not talking taxes.
We're talking about the bill that we are assessed.
Per quarter, not your tax bill, but the water and sewer. So if you're saying, but I need to know is that four cents times what?
Is it, Jim, do you know offhand? Is it four cents a quarter?
Between 1,600 and 1,700 customers.
So you're going to have to make that up.
All right, so I'm going to take $185,000 divided by just roughly 1,600, divide by four. There's four quarters. So it would go up around $29 a quarter.
There you go. That's a lot. So that's, no, that's a lot.
Oh, no, I just tried to do math. No, no, let me finish my thought process. I'm trying to do the math just so that we can tell people that if, you know, if we don't do the $185,000, this is what your bills will go up, so that people are prepared. I don't want all of a sudden to get my phone ringing saying, well, how come my water bill jumped $29 a quarter? And that's what will happen to the council. We've got, I'm just trying to be proactive here. I had the $185 in my little calculator. That's what I was trying to figure out. I took $185,000 divided by 1,600 divided by four, because we build four quarters. And it came to $28.90.
So that's important data. The other piece of data, and now this is going to irritate everybody too, but I have an obligation. My role requires me to remind you of this. Everything that we're testing for right now, we are in compliance. That document right there is the results of the wet test. And I posted that on our website today. It's just come in. The state has a copy of that. Yeah.
Do I have a copy?
Yeah, and you can print it from our website.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, it's there under Reports and Studies. And my understanding from the state is that they need to spend more time with it. So what I want, what I want you to, you can have, it's on our website, it's about.
Okay, I'll look it up.
You can print it. You can have that one too. I just printed out three because.
I can read it. The wet test is insignificant.
Just want you to know that it's there.
Does not test for PFOAs, does not test for PFAS.
And the stuff that we've been required to do, we are in compliance. So I think that's important for you to know making any decisions going forward. We've always been in compliance. It is my intent to be compliant. So as these new tests come out, we will be doing everything we can to stay as proactive as we can. It's not my intent to poison the lake. It's my intent to work with the system that we have in place and work with the state to make sure that we are doing exactly what our diligence requires of us, which is to maintain an ethical standard of cooperation.
But when it comes to testing, that's the gray area.
I have, I have, I had the leachate.
No, 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 let me finish my train of thought. That is, that is the gray area as far as keeping a lower standard because the standard now, but the state standard may not take into account all these other things. And that's, that's my concern, is the state standards or the national standards. Well, that happened with.
That's why you can't be out of compliance for something.
Well, but that happened with.
There is no stamp.
Well, a good example of that, let me finish, please. A good example, a good, a good example is our water treatment plant. Used to be the national standard was 50 parts per billion, okay? They do.
10.
15. It's, no, it's 15. Is it 10 now? Oh, then they lowered it even more because it went. Oh, it hasn't been? Okay, it went from 15 based upon tests and whatever. But that took a long time for them to determine that. We were at what pay bill before we built the plant?
14, 15.
We were at 14, 15, whatever. We were almost there. But we still, we had to build a plant because they lowered the standard. My concern is with this new chemical that's really becoming, does the state really have the ability? They don't have, you know what I mean? That's my big concern.
Can I just make a comment on it? Because first of all, you said, we haven't done a test. They don't know what's in the leachate. You guys, I sent this all to you guys. It's hard to read this stuff unless you do it there. But everywhere in the bold, Newport is, the news Vermont is Newport. It's common. Everywhere in the bold lettering, which is most everywhere here, is where they, it was detected above the reporting limits. Everywhere. The problem is that they don't, they, which is what my whole spiel was before. They have no idea where the standard should be, what to do. All I'm asking you, I hope, I'm talking about how much it's worth to us to continue to pollute the water. Because that's what I heard. And that is very distressing.
Oh, no, I didn't mean to come across that way. I wanted, let me, I came across as saying, let the ratepayers know. That's my, I'm not, I'm not putting, I'm not trying to be, I'm not against whatever you're doing because of dollars. I was just trying to put it to the ratepayers, saying, you can expect a $28 or $29 per quarter increase if we take action tonight or take action, whatever. I was just trying to be proactive because too often, we have taken actions when all of a sudden, the ratepayers don't fully understand. And then our phones start ringing and they want us all. I was just trying to be proactive. I was just trying to steer anyone, saying, oh, no, money-wise.
I wasn't talking about your comment.
Oh, okay, I thought you were for a second. Don't mean to be defensive, I just.
You have a duty to notify.
I understand that.
I got a lot of hands up now, so.
This is, this is the chart.
Yeah. Let me go to people. I've got Pam, Pam, then Beth, and then Jeff.
Pam, lads, I'm a resident of the city of Newport. I would bet if you asked Bennington right now how they would have felt about a $29 increase per quarter for decent water, they would say, hell, yes. But no, we're quibbling about, we're nickel and diming and we have no idea of how this is going to impact on our health. It's okay. I mean, you can smirk, you're not drinking water, Laura. Any parent here with kids is going to be concerned. We have no idea what this stuff is going to do. We do know what it's done in Bennington. Why are we worrying about what in the long term is peanuts? Why are we holding the health of our own community and the health of Sherbrooke and other people who drink from the lake? We are holding them hostage. That's insane.
Beth Farms again. Mayor Minette, you just said something about the, all the building down in Williston and why they might not want the dump there. Well, another news flash. Brevell &amp; Shea represents Snyder Homes, which is the developer who is developing everything there at Finney Crossing and Taff Corners. Connect the dots.
Mr. Mayor, I'm Jack Watson from Newport. And just so that the public has an idea of the scope of what we're taking. The leachate, correct me if I'm wrong, is the worst stuff in that dump that migrates down to a certain point. They drain it off and they truck it out. And how much do they truck out? Fifte, correct me if I'm wrong, fifteen thousand gallons a day? Is that right?
Yes, just in Newport. It's twelve [BLEEP] a year.
Fifteen thousand, that's like filling up the tanks in two gas stations in town. That's how much. Every single day. The worst stuff that that dump is giving off is coming here into our lake. And I don't care, you know, you're not sophisticated enough to treat it, because you don't even know what it is. The state doesn't at least. It's going in every single day. And that's unfair to the public and future generations and the city of Sherbrooke and all those people up there that use it for drinking water. We're shooting ourselves in the foot here.
There's a gentleman in the back, yes.
Hi, I'm Andy Miller, Londonville. Um, and I appreciate the moment to give some comments. Um, I've come up to this wonderful watershed and recreated here, and you folks, it's unbelievable, the special resource you have here, the special water resource. I've come up here, paddled on South Bay, um, done bird watching, um, seen ospreys flying over and other, other water birds, and it's just amazing. And at the same time, to me, it's so incongruous that within a mile or two, there's this egregious of full, fill of all this waste material, which, which I think should be changed to reusables or recyclables or compostables, because at the Gateway Center meeting, the CLF attorney, and I think she was being conservative, stated that two-thirds of the material that's being shipped to the landfill could be either recycled or composted, that was a statewide average. And so, which, and we are receiving, as Charlie has mentioned several times, and, and, and we are receiving this material from all over the state, which I find an abomination, that you guys would let this go on up here? But, um, especially when, I mean, you can just do simple mathematics, but as I understand it, it's a fifty-one acre proposed expansion. Well, then, two-thirds of fifty-one, I just did the math a minute ago, is thirty-four acres that we could accomplish just by removing those materials that could be recycled or composted. I was very disappointed at the meeting at the Gateway Center that, and I know I'm echoing some similar themes about the downfall that the state has, has done in terms of showing concern, appropriate concern, and, and, and the proper answers for this sighting, but I brought, I spoke at that meeting, and I brought up the point that I, and I, and I motioned to the lady that was representing the Solid Waste Program, and I said, "Is it true that it's about five hundred thousand dollars an acre to site a landfill?" Which in this case, fifty-one times five hundred thousand comes out to about twenty-five million plus dollars. And she didn't have the answer. And I just, I went away from that meeting thinking, "How could you not know that simple fundamental answer if you really care about the economic dynamics of what's going on here?" So anyway, I'm just echoing the side of the recycling and the composting and all those materials that can go in. And by the way, also, then, we now know that plastics have a tremendous number of endocrine disruptors. So it's not just the PFOAs, the PFAS, it's, it's also these other items that are in plastics that can be washed through and leached down into the subsurface. But anyway, there's, it's a faulty system, the Casella guys are just trying to do their job, um, and they're doing it to the best of their abilities. But it's all predicated on a faulty system, and, and, and the mayor, Paula, you've echoed that sentiment, that it's all based on a faulty system. Um, I can name three compounds in addition to what, um, uh...
Mr. Walsh.
Mr. Walsh mentioned, that the government let us down once again, but there were lead, PCBs, and, and the third obvious, well, dioxins is another one, one of the most potent chemicals on, on earth. Um, and, 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 uh, the third one was, I wrote it down here, DDT. We all, some of us may be old enough to remember when DDT was used. And the government actually approved and commissioned that and let, and we still manufacture it in this country. We just ship it to other, we sell it to other countries. So I mean, it's just, it's abomination. So it's all based on a faulty system, and we're all trying to work within this faulty system. But I, I, I was just very enthused to hear a lot of people punching through that faulty system and seeing above it. So I wanted to just add to that. Thank you.
I saw Jack, and then I'll go right to you after.
I'm Jack Robberidge, actually, twenty-five, almost thirty years ago, then, if you remember, I was president of the council. Uh, Wayne Wakes USA came in with their grand proposal, how it was never, it was always gonna be just a smaller regional, there's gonna be a line cap landfill. Uh, it was never supposed to become what it is today. That was never the intention. Uh, we had a gentleman at the time, if you remember, Wayne Wheeler, advocated and advocated and advocated, warned us about this day, and we should have listened to him. So don't make the same mistake that we made, stop it now when you can. Uh, we should have never let it happen, we should have listened to Dan and Wayne back then, uh, and not let them do what they've done. Since then, I don't know why it's grown, why the past council have let it grow the way it has been, but you now have an opportunity to probably put a stop to it, so, you know, don't make same mistake that we made twenty-five years ago.
I'm Essie Brown, I live in Derby. I have lived in Newport, and I've had, um, a couple of different properties in Newport. I've lived around the lake, uh, both sides. Um, I grew up as a child very close to the lake, and was swimming most every day in the summer in the lake. Took swimming lessons there. And, um, at that time, it was not as clean as it got to be because of the treatment plant that was, um, established here in Newport. We won't talk about what was in the lake at that point, but, um, so things have gotten cleaner. But I am very concerned about the quality of the water in the lake. Um, I, um, I wonder, you know, we talked about the amount of leachate. This has been a pretty dry summer, I don't know if, if moisture, the rainfall has an effect on the leachate, but I've got to guess it does. And so we've seen a, probably a minimum of what we could see in a wet year of leachate coming to Newport. And, uh, you know, I, I'm really concerned about this. I was talking with a fellow who likes to fish, um, on Saturday, and he said he likes to fish in South Bay. He said this year, though, he's had to pull his, his prop up and clean it every few minutes because there's a lot of growth in the bay. I don't think there are more farms. It's, the problem's been, uh, considered a farm problem, a lot of it. But a lot of it is, uh, is a treatment plant. And, um, I don't, not knowing what we're putting in the water is a great concern. And, um, I'd like to ask you, uh, people who make the decisions for Newport, to stop taking leachate, stop polluting the water. And I think I heard Charlie with a list of other chemicals and compounds that are going into the water, that are way above, uh, the limits. So it's, it's not just PFAs, PFOAs, it's any of the chemicals that we're putting in the water. I mean, when I was a child, we didn't know better, we do now. Thank you.
Susan Watson, once again, I'm wearing a different hat right now. I belong to a group, a charter board group called Memphamagog Community Marine. We are working very diligently to save the Northern Star tour boat on this lake. We have raised a quite a large amount of money from interested donors that we intend to submit a bid to buy the boat. This boat, our plans are to use it for educational purposes as well as scientific purposes, as well as giving tours on the lake. We are going to combine with Memphamagog Watershed and with Memphamagog Communi, um, MCI, out of Magog. Um, this is a tremendous asset for this lake. And if we or someone is not able to buy this and keep it on the lake, we'll lose it forever. But what good is this boat going to do us if we have a dead lake out there? Now, this is a real economic issue. I know it's a health issue, and I'm very concerned about the health aspect. I'm concerned about the fish in the lake that we eat, but I'm also concerned about the economic issue here with that boat. So, um, hopefully, we're going to be able to buy the boat, and it's gonna be a success, and it's gonna stay on this lake. But the lake has gotta be pristine for us to be able to manage that. And if any of you would like to donate...
I'm sorry, sir. I do have to cut you off on that. Go ahead, Miss Ishida, sorry.
Got you. It's okay, Paul, I'll get you after the meeting.
I think I've got a question for either Mr. Gay or anybody from Casella. Apparently, there was testing done at one of the wells near the unlined area, and there was no testing of wells down gradient of the lined area. And has that changed at all?
So there were...
Testing now of the wells that are down gradient of the lined area.
So for PFOAs?
Yeah.
Okay. So, uh, we were asked to test, uh, two wells. Excuse me, we were asked to test six wells at the landfill. Four of those wells were never detected, wasn't there. One of the wells is down gradient and almost in the unlined landfill. Um, that's Monitor Well Two RR, and that had a concentration of a hundred and nineteen parts per trillion. That we knew, I think the last time we were here and shared that. Um, there is a side gradient well that was tested for six point seven parts per trillion, uh, which is less than the standard. And by the way, the Vermont standard is twenty parts per trillion, and the federal standard is seventy. So the state asked us, because of the hundred and six, a hundred and nineteen parts per trillion adjacent to the unlined landfill, they said, "We want you to retest that well, and we want you to test a well a little further away from the unlined landfill, closer to the river." We did that. The second test came back at one oh seven parts per trillion in the well adjacent to the landfill, and no detect at the well a little further away from the unlined landfill. So I think that answers your question.
Okay. Where there is exceedances in your monitoring wells, if they're not immediately close, or are they immediately close to the source? In other words, do you track any of the leakage or migration, um, of the contaminants from their source? Are you able to do that, or?
Yeah. So it was mentioned earlier that we don't test for any contaminants. And we test for thousands and thousands and thousands twice a year in many wells. Fourteen tunnel wells around the landfill, up gradient, down gradient, side gradient, all over. Um, so there's thousands and thousands of analytical data that we have, and reports are prepared. So yes, I think you're sort of going into a little bit of a hydrogeological arena that I'm not an exact expert in, but Craig is, and he probably could answer that a little bit better.
Well, I think you, you explained it, there are some wells that are very close to the unlined landfill, and some wells are very close to the lined landfill. Then there's a second row of wells further out. And so we, we, and there are wells that are up gradient also, which we can use for comparison. Those are all sampled twice a year and analyzed for, for hundreds of constituents. So, and the ones that are, so the ones that are, um, there's about two wells now that, um, and we will be, and the permit is gonna add, add some more wells there, that are about halfway from the unlined landfill edge to the river. That total distance from the unlined landfill to the river is about seven hundred feet. So the wells that are right close to the unlined landfill, that are ten feet or fifty feet away, most of them are showing some impact, relatively small concentrations, but some impact, for sure. The, the wells that are about halfway to the river, so three, four hundred feet to the river, are not showing any impacts.
So there's no, per se, that you can follow back?
No.
To a specific?
No, I mean, we know the unlined landfill is causing groundwater impacts, for sure.
Now, if everyone is aware that the unlined, and this includes the state, if everyone is aware that that unlined landfill section is leaking, why don't they put that on the front burner and say, "Okay, as of tomorrow, you're gonna start digging that out"? Why wait eighteen years?
Yeah, so, that's a very good question. So, um, there's two schools of thought on digging up an unlined landfill. There are some benefits, because you remove, remove the long-term source of contamination. Short-term, there could be larger impacts to the environment. You excavate that waste, you're gonna have releases of gas, you're gonna have rainfall, snow melt coming into the, into the waste, creating more leachate, uh, that has to be dealt with. It's five hundred and fifty thousand yards, excavate. We all know we have very short construction seasons, and when you're dealing with water and freezing, you have complications with moving water, this could be contaminated. So it's not gonna be a, an easy task. Can it be done? Yes. And throughout our landfill oversight committee meetings that we have, I would say probably half of the room is in support of removing the unlined landfill, getting it in a lined landfill, remove the source for long-term, so we know it's gone. And then there's some that says, "No, it's, it's, there's gonna be more damage to the environment. We know what the contamination is, it's not migrating any further away from where it is today. It's very stable, it's very well-known." Um, and there could be more impacts by removing the waste than just leaving it in place. So I heard tonight, I think, some pretty ringing endorsement for removing it and putting it in the lined landfill. In eighteen years, when hopefully I'm still around and I'm still permitting, um, I think we're gonna have some support for that. We'll see.
I'm Laurie Gluckman, I've lived in the, um, Kingdom for forty years. My concern has nothing to do with what Casella is doing, and I agree that they're doing as good a job as they can. My concern is the appearance of what Newport is trying to do right now. And that is, in a few weeks, there's an economic development meeting going on. There's, I read in the paper, there's two hundred and ten units for senior citizens. There's something gonna happen to the whole. Now, with us beginning to turn the corner here in the Kingdom, we have some information, and we're gonna ignore it. We're gonna ignore the fact that there's potential of something happening to the wells in this area. People have to drink. And so on one hand, the select board can go ahead and take a stand, as Charlie suggested, until more information comes in, and that would sort of be the cornerstone to the development of this area. And I think that's really important. Otherwise, we could play the Three Monkeys, and, you know, hands, eyes, and mouth. And the fact is, is you have the information, and maybe all we need is a pause till the testing is done, and everybody feels satisfied. And in the meantime, you're making a statement about what we hope happens here in Newport. And I think that's a really important consideration. I don't think we can sit here and say, "We've got, we've got New England's biggest dump, or close to it, taking in all sorts of stuff, and we're still trying to be an economic center for this part of Vermont." I think it's incongruous, just like the gentleman here said.
I'm gonna go back to this, go ahead, oh, I was just gonna go back to this table that you presented. Was this part of the permit? Or is this just...
It's, it's in the packages, that's, uh, testing of the leachate.
Coming out of this place?
Coming out of all that, the one in yellow is coming out of this place. They tested some.
Which was above the standard.
Yeah. Yeah, everything in bold is above the standard.
Does Pedro still have that? Is Pedro... Unless he wants to talk to Pedro and find out what the process is and what to test for. Pedro, if you don't mind being...
Well, that's a test strictly for PFOAs.
By...
By...
Pedro, do you know anything about this test?
We don't test for PFOAs or PFAs.
We do not test...
No, they don't, they're not required.
So this came from an independent source?
Came from a state water, uh, their name is, I'm trying to find it.
Well, this is Weston Sampson over here. But the state...
That's a three hundred and eighty-three page report.
Weston and Sampson got, this year, the state contracted with Weston and Sampson to go out to all the wastewater plants and test our sludge for PFOAs.
And leachate.
They didn't test our leachate?
Yes, they did.
Well, they didn't, they didn't at the wastewater plant, Charlie.
Well...
All they did is come out and they took, they took the sludge out of the storage tank and all that. If they got leachate, they went someplace else and got it, but they didn't get it from the wastewater plant.
That's just not true. I mean, I don't, maybe he wasn't there that day. That's leachate.
They probably did, but...
They also tested the sludge, which is also part of that report. It's three hundred and eighty-three pages.
I'm just...
I'm, I'm telling you, it's not coming from me, that's their report.
Yeah.
And it's in the permit. If you open that thing up, it's one of the tests. It's three hundred and eighty-three pages long. That's like page thirty, thirty or so.
Oh, no, because it concerns me when I see the stuff that's exceeding, you know, that's...
They're all bold, they're all above the standard.
That's what my big concern is, when I see that there, above.
I would think that we had to contact that company to find out what they use for testing, because if Pedro says they didn't test the leachate over here, they must have gotten it from somewhere.
They got it from Newport Leachate. It says Newport, Newport leachate.
Yeah, I know that, but...
I read the whole record.
But we've got a gentleman that's there almost twenty-four seven.
First of all, leachate in on our site.
Well, maybe they tested the leachate coming in here.
The leachate's over at the city garage in the tank that they dumped there, and then it's, you get, put it in our pump station, and from the pump station, it gets diluted with the wastewater, and then it comes to the wastewater plant. So if he did, then that's not, and that's not our property, so he had all the rights to go over there, and that, that's... So he had all the rights to go over there, and that's Casella's thing.
That's probably what they did. They also tested the ethylene, which is your problem.
Coming out of the land. So I'm going to have to look at support and see.
But they didn't test for PFOAs, because they can't treat PFOAs. So what that is, is coming back up, because they can't treat it.
Can't treat it, okay. Joe?
It's been a long night, and I know probably everybody's kind of had it up to here with the landfill, and I understand this emotional topic. I'd like to invite the board, and I'm not looking for a date, but if you'd like to come to the landfill for a tour, or anybody in the room that would like to come up to the landfill for a tour, maybe a little more relaxed, and get around, see some of these things. The invitation is open. I understand that the city of Newport's wastewater treatment plant permit is up for renewal. And I heard a lot of smirks in here tonight about the agency of natural resources and the waste management division, and the watershed management division. I personally think that they do a very good job, and it's a bunch of very talented people at the agency. I understand they're looking at your permit right now, and they're evaluating everything that's been talked about tonight. They also did the same thing with our permit, which was just issued. We've got three conditions specific to PFOAs, and I think that's good. I think we need to look at what's in the waste stream. I think we might need to look at what's in the leachate. We fully support the city and its wastewater treatment plan, and its compliance with its permits. If anything needs to be done, including shutting the leachate off, because it's a bad thing, and it's proven to be a bad thing, which we don't know. We've also heard tonight a bunch of times that, we don't know. We don't know. So if we don't know, let's wait till we know. And make that decision at that point. Because maybe the leachate is not having an impact on the lake. The city of Sherbrooke just recently won an award for the cleanest drinking water in the province. So the drinking water is pretty good. So if we're not having, or the city is not having an impact on the lake.
The city of Sherbrooke is asking you to stop the leachate in the lake.
Yeah.
That's straightforward and there anymore. It's right there. So stop saying that they have the best water. First of all, that was true. It's not true anymore. Today, the best water in Quebec is around Quebec City, where they bought all the land from the lake to the treatment facility. They bought all the land, like New York did. So Sherbrooke is not the best water now in Quebec. It's a city around Quebec.
It was in the fall of 2017. That's all I know. So, so I would say, let's just look at the state's permit issuance and the conditions that they're going to put on the city for the treatment of all its wastewater, which includes our leachate.
We have other influent, is that the right word? We have other materials that we treat, including from Derby. They own 11% of that facility. I'm looking at Pedro. We have septic haulers. We have campers. Is there any other one that I've known?
Industrial, we have Columbia Forest, a hospital, nursing homes, and stuff like that. We, in prison, places like that too, that the state is asking me to start to test them too, to see what their discharge is. Especially because of our new, the new PFO4 phosphorus limitations and nitricants and all that, we're going to have to start testing for them. So we're, I know our permit's going to be a lot stricter than it has in the past. I don't know exactly what we're going to be asked to do, but I know from what I've gathered from the people, and you've seen that it's going to be more stringent than it was prior to.
I just want one final comment, and I hope that you guys go to a vote on it. What I heard from Casella was, we don't know. We're probably, it's possible we're poisoning your lake. We want you to wait until we know you're poisoning your lake. What I asked you was to stop now. If they can prove to you they're not poisoning your lake, you can start taking it again. Simple. It's the precautionary step. I believe, from everything I've read, nobody knows PFOAs are bad, bad things, and we're dumping a whole lot of it in the water. It's got nothing to do with Casella, they can put it in the muck everywhere. So the first part of that, all I want is for you to make your motion, until you know that it's safe, you stop. That's what, that's what I'm asking you. Not, let's wait until, you know, the state figures it out. Well, I can tell you, that could be 20 years from now. And today is the time to do it. Now's the time to do it. Now's when their permit's going through, now's, now's when it's at the head. You know, to push it off just so outside out of mind, it doesn't come up again, is not the way to see it. The reason I'm asking you to, to take that same stance on the expansion is until they can prove that it's safe. That's, that's what I ask for in a motion. I don't think that's too much to ask. And I think it's your duty to do that for your, for your public, for our neighbors.
I've seen Anne.
Did you?
I need to answer Newport. I just want to say that I really appreciate this discussion tonight, and that I believe it's been very factual as opposed to emotional, and I think it's been very helpful for all of us. And I appreciate the council making a forum like this happen, and to listen so carefully and ask the questions. It's very helpful to all the citizens, and we can feel confident that we're being heard. And, and because we're being heard, we're not being emotional. We're sticking to the facts.
Mr. Schannett.
When is the Act 250 begin the process? It doesn't state.
Depends on appeal. There's 30 days to appeal this permit by somebody, I don't know if anyone's appealing it at this point or not, but we won't.
That would be the expansion portion of it.
No, the, yes. Well, that's the only permit they've got.
The Act 250 expires at the end of the year.
That will start.
It doesn't start until sometime next year.
We don't have a date. Do you have a date on that?
No, I don't, but I think there's a 30-day appeal period now, and then it will be formally approved or not approved. And then, at any time thereafter, the Act 250 review can occur. This has to, the A and R review has to stop first.
But the expansion permit that they've been granted, that's where the 30-day process begins, or began last week or whatever?
To appeal.
To appeal. Okay, that's on the expansion.
That's right.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else from anyone in the audience?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to add before we close. First of all, we appreciate very much you can write us. You know, I don't even know how, how much my car weighs. When you're talking about 500,000 ton, how much is it? Well, 500,000 ton is what the municipality of Montreal produces in one year, 600,000 ton. That's the volume coming in there. So 2 million people in the city of Montreal produce 600,000 ton. And here, we have 500,000 ton coming in here. I don't know how much is 500,000 ton. A study from the University of Quebec claimed that it's about 7,000 trucks, 7,000 trucks. Now, now they push all this garbage, you know, so it may not, maybe just half of it. But when that study was done for the city of Montreal, 600,000 ton represent 71,000 trucks. That's a hell of a lot of garbage coming in the North Country here.
Anything else? I'm going to turn to the council. Does anyone wish to make a motion?
Before, okay, I want to ask you folks here, would you prefer that a motion be done before a full board?
I would like it to be done the sooner the better.
So you want it done now, one, I'm missing. It's up to you. We can do it either way.
Well, I expect all three of you that are here are responsible.
Okay.
Does anybody wish to make a motion?
The mayor can be the fourth.
Does anybody wish to make a motion regarding what Mr. Pronto wishes the council to do? Which is, one, to immediately stop taking leachate from Casella. That's, would be one motion, if anyone so chooses. And the next would be to take a stand for Act 250, opposing the expansion. Until, basically, both of them.
For Act 250. Just to take, we would bring that letter to Act 250. For the council to take a stance on opposing the expansion until they can prove that it's, everything is safe. Same thing with the leachate. But you can put that as an addendum to it. So if they can prove it in a year, and you want to take the leachate back, then that $29 Laura was talking about, we're going to affect everybody. It takes 20 years to start.
Does anybody on the council wish to make a motion regarding this?
I'll make that motion. We go ahead and stop taking leachate, and if the city of Newport takes a stand against the expansion of the landfill in the country.
Could I modify that, please?
How would you like to modify it?
I think you want to say, stop taking leachate until proper testing is made available, right?
Well.
Not proper testing, proven.
When could that be done?
That's something that your motion is going to force the A and R to take action. So I don't know.
If it requires that, then yes, I would modify it to state that as well.
Yeah.
Proper testing?
Proven.
Proven testing.
Proof that it's safe.
Proof that it's safe, okay. So that's, so the motion for that's been made. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Could you read the exact motion back? Sorry, I just want to have it, because it's very important.
I think the motion says that there is move to stop taking leachate and take a stance on the expansion until proper testing proves that there's no PFO or whatever.
PFAS and PFOAs.
Yeah. So a motion's been made and seconded. Made by Mr. Schannett, seconded by Mr. Ross. Discussion, any discussion on the motion?
We're just limiting it to testing those two chemicals?
I would test any.
They test anything they want.
I would even make sure that.
That we can make it into motion instead of testing for.
That list.
This list, he said.
That has quite a bit. And is that the limited, a list of?
That is, that is the array of PFOAs that they tested. PFAS, which they tested, which PFOAs is.
But I think Kevin is referring to all testing, because there's other Meadows.
Well, I mean, it wouldn't hurt for you to say all testing is safe.
I don't think you're going to be able to.
Yeah, but according to who's standing.
Well, that gentleman back there was saying, I'm sorry, I forget your name, the one from Lyndebell?
Yeah, Ani Miller. Ani Miller.
What other, yours, did you say, dioxins?
Yeah, well, just, there's a, well, my point was, is there's just a whole, there's a whole battery of contaminants that have been approved by the federal government. And those have, we've learned, as several other people have articulated here very well, that we've learned down the road that our federal government wasn't, was, was a little bit ahead of their headlights, being very nice to them. And so I think, I think it's really, I'm very grateful that the board is considering this aspect, because what I was trying to say is, the whole regulatory system is faulty. These chemicals become approved and are used before full testing proves later that they were, they were incredibly lethal. And again, I mentioned DDT, lead, PCBs, et cetera. So I don't know how you would articulate that, but I think it's some very serious concerns on that issue and how you articulate that. I'm not sure how to make it clear.
My, my point is, we make motion, we just limit it to the PFOAs and PFAS. Are we just ignoring a whole bunch of other things that could?
Well, apparently, we don't know that, and the state doesn't know that.
I don't think we know yet with the others.
Nobody knows anything.
I would, I would rather err on the side of caution.
Right, I'm just, me too, I just want to be, until we can know that that discharge is safe.
Okay. All right. Anything else from council? I'm going to go to Anne.
Mr. Schannett has once suggested this before, which is the council could always change its mind later on. I don't know that you need to put in that proviso. I think you decided on the evidence presented to you today that you should stop taking, or you can decide you should stop taking leachate at any time. And that's all the motion really needs to be. At any time in the future, based on evidence that's presented to you, when you find that you think it's safe, you can decide to start taking leachate again. So you don't need that safety issue, which creates a question of who's going to decide what's safe, and when, when will we decide? Is it 20 parts per million, 19 parts per million, or when it's safe? Just leave that part out. When they come back to you, whenever anybody comes back to you and says, hey, look, look at all this testing, we've shown this is safe, then start taking the leachate again. You don't need that little part in the, in your motion about, until it's safe, just, we shouldn't be taking leachate now, based on what you've heard.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to do. Can I comment on that? The safe thing was my idea. That makes a lot of sense to me. If it's safe or unsafe, does it matter what chemical it is that's unsafe? So, so I would probably leave that out too.
In that case, Mr. Ross would have to withdraw his motion. Excuse me a second for me to amend my motion.
I'll withdraw in a second.
Okay, then I would amend the motion to, to strike that section of the.
All right, Dennis, now tell me exactly what you want.
Laura's going to read it.
You want to stop taking leachate. But you don't have any standard to tell you when it's going to be open for discussion again. And again, I hate to be the bad guy, but leachate is not the only stuff you take.
I can't hear you. Can you, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I can't hear the city manager. Can she speak louder?
Leachate is not the only material that you take. So how do you equate with a testing that's available that leachate is the bad guy? How do you know with the testing that's available? And if you stop taking it, how do you proceed with testing to determine that it's safe?
Your motion said that you're stopping to take the leaching until you can determine that it is safe. We're not talking about stuff you're taking from the North Country or Derby. You're talking about the leaching from Casella.
So, so how does that, how does that advance it when we're still treating it? I mean, I, I think there's something missing.
We won't be treating it.
But I'm expecting that with the limited amount of leachate that we will be taking in, significant numbers would be shown that it's bad. And it's going to get better. But if Pedro's.
I'm going to ask Pedro that, because he's the expert.
Right.
We're discussing this about a second.
Yes, that's what I was going to say. We need a second to his motion.
Have we completed this, just stop taking the leachate?
I've got to move it, Dennis, move, stop taking the leaching till they determine that it's safe.
Okay, Laura, for full discussion, roll on. We'll do it in a second.
You already did that.
Put it on.
I'll put it on. I'll second that.
Okay, so now. Yes, thank you. I was about to say that. Now, I'm glad you, because I was about to say that. So now, Pedro.
Yes. What do you want me to answer?
At what point do we know if the leachate is safe?
How are we going to know?
You don't have any guidelines from the state.
We have a standard.
It's going to be 20, all we know is.
Let me just make it simple for you, Dennis. The state gives us a permit right now to discharge. We're going through a new permit to discharge. We're meeting our permit to discharge at this point in time. We did a wet test for our new permit to discharge. The state asked us to do what to do with it. And that, we said the, we had to find a company would do it. It was one out of Southampton, New Hampshire. I think you've got that right in your hand. It's pretty lengthy, and it's pretty detailed. I had to send it to the state. When I got it back, I sent it to the state. The state is analyzing it, and they're digesting it. They said that they look pretty good to them, but they want to go through all the aspects and stuff like that. I have no answers yet of what, what's going on with the wet test. Is it good, is it bad, is it not? All right, we have other things that we've been testing for, other places. All right, we have other things that we've been tested for, other places that's been coming in, that we need to look at, too. Some of it is just in a regular sewer, some of it's coming from our septic haulers, some of it's coming from the village in here. So, as the mayor's, I mean, excuse me, as the city manager said, we can stop the leachate. But is, is some of the stuff that you want us, you're talking about testing, which the state's telling us that we don't have to test for, how are we gonna know? You know, I mean, I'd like to see, I would like to be able to, in my own personal opinion, because I'd like to have the state get back to us and say, what does that wet test show us? Then work backwards from there.
Any idea when the state would get back?
I've been, I've been trying to get in touch with them since the middle of last week, so I could get an answer for you tonight. The city manager asked me, and I've been working very diligently on trying to get an answer from them, but sometimes, as Charlie says, things with the state don't work that fast.
But they didn't test for this stuff?
They tested for, all I, they called me, told me that they were testing for PFOAs in our sludge. Western, Western and Sampson come, and we give a sample of our sludge and all that. As far as the F1, you know, they can take F1 tests from the state. We do them all the time, you know, and everything else. So whatever they got, I mean, everything we do is public record, there's nothing we hid.
But do we test, just in my mind again, do we test what's coming out of the pipe into the Clyde River for PFOAs?
No.
That's my answer there.
And they never have. And I initially was the first time that they, they called us, that we're gonna start doing it.
Right, and that's the unknown factor.
Unknown, unknown, is it there? And how are we gonna treat it? Is the unknown.
They know it's there, yeah. The wet test, just, I don't want that to confuse you to what we're doing. The wet test lumps 80,000 organisms or so, all into one. They do not say it's PFOA, it's lead, it's arsenic. It just says it's either there or it's not there. It doesn't have a thing to do with PFOAs or PFOA. They can't treat for it. Everything I read to you earlier says they can't test for it. They don't know what standards are accurate. They're waiting for testing. And the treatment process, the wastewater treatment facility, does not efficiently remove it. I mean, I, so we're kind of going around in circles here?
We're going in circles, I want to...
We're going around in circles, and I don't want you to get confused and look at the shiny object over here, because it doesn't, the wet test has nothing to do with what we're talking about. Zero.
I have one other thing to offer. One of the things that Pedro has discussed, and trying to figure out how to work with this, is sort of doing a cleanse of the wastewater treatment facility. And that would mean to have a period of time where everything is shut off, everything that we have control. And then, taking our measurements, and then gradually reintroducing those influence to try to find out what the number should be, and, and how to work with those.
Why are you so against waiting until a toxic chemical that we know is there is not treated? I don't understand.
What I am doing, Charlie, is my job. I am doing my job as the city manager to make sure that we have well-rounded information. That's my job.
Okay, I'm gonna, I think we've discussed this. We have a motion, it's been seconded. Then all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye. I can't say aye.
So, it was unanimous? I like to be on record. I don't normally vote, but I want to be on record as aye. But I don't normally vote, but I want to be put down as aye.
Very much, guys, you're my... Now, we're all set. I'll just need a letter.
No, he didn't vote on that. On Act 250 also, that was probably...
Thank you very much.
Mr. Schnett? Mr. Schnett? Read. Thank you very much.
No, no, I just... This is them. James. I'll just get these ones right out. Just, just move, they are just... Are you staying overnight, or you don't know? I don't know. Be careful. It's okay. Yeah. New business first. Them seems like no problem. Is being delayed for the end of the upcoming derby, because of so-called wetting. That's what gets me with the double standard.
We don't agree on much, though.
Okay, we need to move on. Mr. Johnson, do you have any new business?
No, I don't. Any new business? I, no.
I don't have any new business, new business?
Just want to talk about we're coming into the budget session and what to expect.
Excuse me, I can't hear the city manager. She can't speak up. I'm entitled to hear her.
She's doing the best she can. I'm sorry, but she's speaking up. I mean, if we need to get a PA system, we had people out there.
Yes.
But the door was open. You know, we understand, there's no need to keep hounding the city manager.
But I'm entitled to hear.
Well, I, I'm not gonna get into it. She's doing the best she can. And we had people behind her, and...
The new business is that we're coming into the budget season. So I just wanted to let you know what to expect, because our next meeting will be November 5th. So, we're going through the audit, and we'll be coming to the board on the 5th for reassignments, commitments, assignments, and what's the third word? Reassignments.
Reassignment for the audit.
So, we're working with the auditor, and we'll be having, I'm very pleased with how the audit is turning out. So I hope to have the official recommendations at November 5th meeting. And then, we'll go into our budget generating process, which you've been through before. We'll come up with a draft and present it to you on the screens. You'll have an opportunity to speak to each department head, and we'll have executive sessions between each department head as well. Last year and the year before, by pure coincidence, we were able to approve our budget on January 4th. So from that process, from about November 5th through the month of November and December, sometimes we hold special meetings just for the specific purpose of going over the budget. So I just wanted to let you know we're coming into that season and what to expect. That's all I have for the new business.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, old business?
Yeah, I do. The council got to sign loan documents on the new police car. It's a, I think it's a 2018 Explorer, trading in the 2013.
That's the lease?
$6,700 for it. There is money in the budget, money budgeted for this car.
That's the lease, the lease of the vehicle, correct? Oh, no.
No, we buy it.
We buy it, okay.
That serves him for three years instead.
Okay. We just need to sign these and send them out. I'm trying to see what the interest rate was.
I wish I don't mind for that.
You didn't get your car for 2.59%?
I don't think so.
You need to buy a cruiser.
Even though I have the city buy my car.
I don't think so.
Well, they do, you get paid every week.
Oh.
Oh, that's true.
They gotta be careful.
Signing the right spot there.
Can't somebody else tell me that?
Is that all of us?
Any other old business? Any old business?
Yes. The meeting for the DOT and Waring Committee is probably gonna happen on the 22nd, from 3 to 5. The 22nd of this one.
Very good. Anything else? I don't have anything. Any old business?
Just, I'm glad it's happening till 5, because then you can all go over to the unveiling of the development, the waterfront in downtown Valmont. I printed up a few of you, hoping that you'll take them. I've got some for members of the audience as well. If you just want to pass this on. And hope to see you there. The planning's going very well, so we're excited about it. Just wanted to mention again, so it would be on the radar screens. That's all I have.
Now we need an executive session to discuss labor relation agreements, one VSA, 313A1. We need a motion.
I understand. Mr. Mayor, what do you? Give your motion here. I move to find the premature general public knowledge of the subjects of the anticipated executive session tonight, including place the board in where persons involved a substantial disadvantage.
A motion's been made. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that one.
Made and seconded. Any discussion? And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And also, I also want that we enter into executive session to discuss labor relations under VSA Act 1, 313A1.
The motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. We're going into executive session.